led committee of the whole meeting for February sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen. I call the committee of the whole meeting to order and ask the clerks to please call the rule.
Trustee Aaron's?
Here.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carabinero, absent. Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item we have in our committee meeting this evening is under planning and zoning committee, Chairman Ranky.
May I, may I ask a question, please, at this time? Planning and zoning with the I dot U S twenty feasibility study, I'm sure is going to take considerable amount of time. And out of respect to our golf pro, I'd ask if we could amend this and move right into finance and golf.
That's a good idea. Let's do that.
Thank you very much.
Let's do finance and golf then.
All right, we're switching them around?
Yeah.
All right, does anybody have a problem with that?
Nope.
All right, so the items are switched. We'll go into the finance and golf committee, Chairman Danny.
Well, thank you very much. What we're looking at is staff is recommending golf fees for the two thousand sixteen season being increased for both residents and non-residents, rates for eighteen holes and nine holes of twilight rounds. Staff is also recommending an increase to the season passes to reflect the change in green fees. Depending upon the type of pass purchased, the increase will range anywhere from fifty to seventy dollars. Daily greens fees, and this is extremely important, daily greens fees for seniors and juniors will remain unchanged. Phil Lenz is here, a golf professional, and if we have any questions, I would ask Phil to field those for us.
All right, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Last year, we raised the rates, I think it was last year, wasn't it, two thousand thirteen? We did raise the rates.
No.
And we did not raise rates last year.
Yet.
When did we last raise the rates? That's the question.
Two thousand thirteen.
Two thousand thirteen. And previous to that, when was the last time we raised rates before then?
Whoa.
Two thousand and eleven.
So every two years, we're raising the rates approximately?
Approximately over the, over the last several years, yes.
Okay. And all right, I'll hold off for now, let some people ask other questions if they have them.
Well, all I can say in rebuttal to that is I've reviewed these rates and I've played at numerous golf courses through the, out the area, and we are absolutely, you know, level or below. We're right in the ballpark, let me phrase it that way, with the other courses in the, in the, in this area. And one of the interesting things that I do want to point out is that seniors specifically make up a large portion of the golf program over Bartlett Hills during the week. And staff was able to maintain the current cost for juniors and seniors, so I would not expect any decrease in play of seniors or juniors at the course.
What classifies the age limit for a junior?
Juniors are seventeen and under.
Seventeen and under, thank you.
And seniors are, I know I qualify.
Sixty and older.
I think the last time we did have a rate raise, we did show comparisons of other cities and how we stacked up against them. If we raise it to forty-one dollars, we're still in the ballpark figure of the median level, or we at the high?
We are going to fall right, right about in the middle where we've historically been in comparison to other similar golf courses in the area.
So do you think we're going to lose golfers by raising this rate?
I do not, I do not. That, that's one of the reasons we don't want to raise seniors and juniors. That was the one segment of the market that I was afraid of disrupting, and we left their daily fees alone, or proposing to leave daily fees alone for them.
What are the current rates at the other golf course in town? Apple Orchard?
Well, Apple Orchard is a, is a much smaller, it's a nine-hole facility, it's a par three facility. We don't really track their rates, in all honesty, it's somewhere in the twelve, twelve to thirteen dollar range to play nine holes.
How do you compare them?
Correct, correct.
How do we compare to Villa Olivia, though? That would be more comparable, right?
We would be comparable to them in the number of holes that we have on the golf course, but I think we offer a much better product.
Was that phrased elegantly? That was absolutely, wow.
Yeah.
You know, one of the reasons we don't do the in-depth kind of reviews, comparisons with other golf courses is that it's a much more fluid situation now. Golf courses can change their rate on a daily basis, a lot of them have third parties who represent them. Well, maybe you want to talk about that a little bit. When you say what are the rates of the other golf courses, there are no standard rates.
What is posted on a golf course's website or on the sign in their golf shop nowadays is really not what a lot of them are charging. There's a large, large segment of the business that has gone to internet bookings. What those people are usually looking for is a discount unless it's a really prime time. What a little rate increase does allows us to discount off of a, a little bit of a higher rate.
Do we use any third-party internet marketing?
We did at Bartlett Hills about two hundred thousand dollars last year with Golf Now, so yeah, we're very involved with that. That number's going to keep growing.
That's great.
If I can make a comment, if, you're not a golfer.
I am not a golfer, yet.
Sometime, you should go up to Bartlett Hills and, and grab a golf cart and fill, and just ride around, then go to Apple Orchard, then go to Villa Olivia, so you can get some kind of comparison. I personally think there is not a more fun golf course to play than, than Bartlett Hills. And we take good care of the course, well, we don't, but those that need to do.
Kevin does an outstanding job of greenskeeping.
And we do have the comparable number of holes as every other golf course, but go look at them and, and see how the courses differ, and you'll see that Bartlett Hills is head and shoulders above what we have here in town.
Good idea, trustee Aaron's.
I'll go with you. I'll drive the cart.
I'd be glad to take you.
I'll drive the cart.
I've ridden a car. That's wise. That's wise.
Phil?
If you ever ride with Valerie, she drives the cart.
I trust her, though.
Phil?
Yes.
Have we thought about possibly doing what St. Andrews does, where they change their green fees in the fall, and then they also throw out a really low winter rate?
We, we already do that in both of the shoulder seasons, in the spring and in the fall as well. I think what we're talking about here tonight is what our in-season golf rates will be, our posted rates. But we do, yes, we offer an early season rate, and then we offer a fall rate in accordance with what everybody else does in, in the industry. And then also, since we're open twelve months a year, we do go to a winter rate for, you know, playable days in winter months.
Yeah. Being remote, I have the luxury of looking up St. Andrews' rates online, so they have fallen winter rates that are relatively low, but I believe their regular season rates are higher than forty-one dollars, aren't they?
Right in the, right in the ballpark. They've actually come down on rate over the, over the last several years, particularly in the shoulder seasons. They used to charge into the fifties and, you know, mid-fifties in the middle of winter to play golf, but with the increased number of courses staying open, they've, they've come off of that rate quite a bit.
If there are no more questions, then I move to approve the two thousand sixteen golf season rates as presented.
Second.
We're just in committee, so we could send, we have to send this on to the board at another meeting for final approval.
Well, I just want everyone to know that my notes are incorrect here because it's as, it's as, all right.
That's fine. You just owe your sleep.
I think we've got a relatively general agreement that these seem to be adequate and just Phil's research he's done on these, so we'll move it to, onto a board meeting for a vote.
And says the same thing.
Thank you, trustee Danny.
Okay.
Next item we have under the committee of the whole meeting is planning and zoning. Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one big item, the I dot U S twenty feasibility study. With that, I'll turn it over to, to Jim to introduce our guests here from I dot, who I know has already gotten an earful from us in the, in the lobby, and will probably continue to get an earful, and I mean that in a nice way. I mean the earful, so with that, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ranky. We have Pete Hammett from I dot who's heading up this feasibility study for the U S twenty Illinois three ninety project. This basically is the area, as we know from coming off the Elgin-O'Hare at Lake Street all the way to Shales Parkway, and Marie Glenn is here also from, from I dot and the consultant. We have met with Pete, Pete and his team is are very professional. We've gone to a couple meetings at Hanover Parks Village Hall, and I know he's presented to the village of Streamwood and to Hanover Park. And if you haven't seen him, we have the full-scale plans out in the hallway to review, but Pete, it's all yours, and hopefully the slideshow is all up and everybody has a copy of it.
Thank you, and thanking you for making time tonight for presentation on this. I'm a civil engineer, I've been with I dot almost thirty years, work out of the District One office in Schaumburg, and I wear a couple of different hats. I have an administrative role as well as project management from time to time. This is feasibility study, so it's like pre-planning, trying to develop a concept and see what community comments are on that. The next step would be a phase one study, and we don't have any funding for that. We're just looking to get some thoughts and comments on the feasibility study. All right, there we go. A little bit of background. I dot had studied the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway in the eighties and early nineties and recommended an expressway all the way from what used to be called East Bartlett Road at Lake Street, and now it's called North Avenue, from that point all the way to the west side of O'Hare. And then for the rest of its length, there was a recommendation to just simply add a median, a curved median to Lake Street and realign Oak, Oak Avenue and Bartlett Road, but, so expressway from here over and arterial over here. And it was based on, which I never thought of before, I would get to that point, but a year twenty-ten forecast, so the year twenty-ten was the future back then. Bit more about that west end of the expressway. Today, it ends at Lake Street, and the ultimate plan was to swing around what was then the town of Ontarioville, now it's the Ontarioville Historic District, and connect in here at North Avenue or East Bartlett Road. And it would actually change the configuration of Lake Street. The Elgin-O'Hare, this here, would actually plug right into Lake Street, and then if you were on this leg of Lake Street coming from the Barrington Road intersection, you would have to make a right turn or a left turn. And then this was North Avenue right here. So different traffic scenario, certainly from a while ago. More recently, we finished a study of the Elgin-O'Hare in twenty-twelve that addressed the eastern part of that transportation facility. We had identified a bypass around O'Hare, as well as improvements to the existing Elgin-O'Hare all the way to the west side of O'Hare. And as you all know, that construction's going on right now. And that was a year twenty-forty forecast, and we left alone the, any recommendations west of Lake Street. Also, what was happening in the last couple of years is village of Hanover Park was looking at that area south of, on what was historic, is historic Ontarioville, looking at a land use plan with office and commercial and some residential. And they were looking at the Elgin-O'Hare and asking the question, could this be something other than an expressway? Provide more accessibility to this part of their village? So we said, okay, we'll do a feasibility study, we'll work with you on that. But it's not just a Hanover Park thing, it's a Streamwood, Bartlett, Elgin issue, even DePage County, and certainly the Illinois Tollway, who is building this project here. So we were going to examine this, we need to look at a broader study area, so we're looking at new alignments here in, in this particular area, but then just Lake Street as an arterial out west to Shales Parkway. So basic purpose is reevaluate the recommendations from nineteen ninety-one using updated forecasts and thinking about updated land use planning, particularly in Hanover Park, and looking at how we transition from an expressway to an arterial. The nineteen ninety-one plan had us coming down on a big bridge to a stoplight, and it put that kink in Lake Street, so want to take another look at that. And then determine if there's enough information here and consensus to move forward with any further planning. As I mentioned earlier, we don't have any funding for phase one, we're just looking to finish the feasibility study. In terms of the transportation need, just looking at a relative comparison of this section of Lake Street from Shales Parkway down to the existing Elgin-O'Hare. In a relative sense, what you see in the bluish bars are the heavier traffic in congested areas, the ovals kind of overlap where we have sections of roadway, higher crashes, higher number of crashes, and then the stars represent where we have, in a relative sense, highest number of crashes and intersections. So those kind of the problem areas. In terms of travel patterns, as you would expect, the Elgin-O'Hare, this major east-west facility, so we've got travel desires or major corridors feeding into that on Lake Street, as well as West Bartlett Road and Devon and Railroad Avenue and Sterns Road. The main player here, though, is, is Lake Street. If we looked at concept recommendations, we're thinking if the Elgin-O'Hare was extended, we would need to do some capacity improvements in particular. There are existing needs, but certainly with an extension of the Elgin-O'Hare, that would place more emphasis on that. So sort of at a minimum, widening Lake Street from four lanes to six lanes between North Avenue and Park Boulevard, and then between Route fifty-nine and Naperville Road, and proposing an interchange at Shales Parkway. You've got that dip down to the signal and back up again, this would clean up some of that. We actually have an ongoing study of Lake Street going west of here into Elgin, so it'd match up with that as well. Terms of the cross-section on Lake Street, we'd look at it from a complete street standpoint, so there would be bike and pedestrian facilities, and with a curb median, an opportunity for enhanced landscaping, or some landscaping, because mostly out there today, it's just an asphalt median. And with both of these concepts, whether it's four lanes or six lanes, we would need additional property, ten-foot or roughly, on average, ten-foot on either side. So kind of stepping through the improvement recommendations, we have an interchange concept here. You can see, well, a lot of ramps, but what we're doing is trying to keep mainline Lake Street from having to go through a signal, and providing a connection between Bluff City and Shales Parkway as well, with ramps to connect you to Villa or to Lake Street. As we head east, again, sticking with that arterial concept, but as we get over by Villa Olivia, trying to flatten out those curves a little bit. Then as we approach Naperville Road, adding some turn lanes to that intersection and looking at adding a lane between Naperville Road and Route fifty-nine. Further east, this is a concept that's been around a while, but realigning Oak Avenue to meet up with Bartlett Road, you've got a lot of traffic that stacks on this section of Oak here, and so for people wanting to go through or north-south, this gets them off of Lake Street. Again, on the eastern section here, as we touch down to the Elgin-O'Hare, we're thinking we would need an additional lane in each direction of the Park Boulevard. And a little bit different idea for connecting in an Elgin-O'Hare as an arterial, rather than breaking up the continuity of Lake Street, this concept here would just plug in the new roadway as a T-intersection, actually as an intersection with Mark Thomas Lane. And we'd have to realign North Avenue to connect to this new Elgin-O'Hare arterial. So this is kind of the concept we've come up at this point, but if there are future studies, we would roll up our sleeves, work with the communities, and a lot more finer grain of detail to, to really evaluate this further. Terms of the, then, on new alignment, we looked at a lot of different options, four-lane arterial, two-lane arterial, because we were concerned about how traffic would distribute, either coming off of roads or coming onto them. Four-lane arterial with overpasses at major intersections, or four-lane arterial with looking at particular, in particular, the transition from the existing Elgin-O'Hare to the arterial. In fact, this concept models, we tested it as, as you're coming west, it's one lane, and then opens up to the intersection at County Farm Road. But give the motorists the idea that it's time to slow down, put a curb in there to transition to an arterial. So yes, one of the objectives, improve that transition to the arterial system, look at Hanover Park's updated land use planning, but also look at protecting the existing land uses, we've got those neighborhoods on the east end of Bartlett. An arterial, an arterial footprint is smaller and can be moved further away, so in a relative sense, a bit more buffer for those neighborhoods, and try to more evenly distribute traffic. And this is the unmeant, this, this kind of shows you that connection up at Lake Street. We would go under the railroad, under Devon, push the alignment further to the east away from these neighborhoods. We'd have a connector road to get back to Devon Avenue, and then come around and connect to County Farm, and then on to the Elgin-O'Hare. And there were some questions in our group meetings. We've got a working group that has Bartlett, Hanover Parks, Streamwood, Page County, Wells and Tollway. And one of the questions, well, it's going to be a pretty high price tag, so could you stage construct? Well, if we advance this one leg at a time, we need to have a good place for it to land. And where does this traffic want to go? Wants to go to Lake Street. So doing a partial extension would simply make it a little bit more difficult for folks to get back to where they want to go. So if any stage construction is done, we think it would be this piece in between, if the village of Hanover Park redeveloped this, this area, perhaps that could be part of those improvements, perhaps if, you know, market's in the right place, you know, maybe that could be part of the development. But just a connector road between Devon Avenue and Lake Street, rather than all this other connections, a step at a time. So if anything, that would be something that, if you're going to build a part of it, that would be, I think, the only logical part. So some of the, the benefits, interchange at Shales Parkway is going to help out mobility, additional lanes where we have bottlenecks, intersection improvements, adding turn lanes, and motorized travel accommodations, bikes, pedestrians, left turns on Arrow only, and the curb median also is a important safety feature. Terms of the extension, we think it gives a better transition to the arterial system, and repeats traffic, provides better access to the area, incorporates those complete streets concepts, and again, the immediate traffic safety is better than what's out there today. So this is why we looked at stage construction, because if we look at the all-in cost, it's over two hundred and ninety dollars. So the western extension even that, that little piece between the line, far north of thirty-nine dollars. In terms of our next steps, going through meetings like this and getting feedback from the communities, and if we had feedback or wrap up the feasibility study first half of two thousand and sixteen, and initiate phase one as appropriate, that means you've got a consensus, and it's on a list of priorities that competes with a lot of other things before we move forward. If that's a transportation idea, if you want to know what's happening at all, is there any, like, questions? All right. Thank you.
That's a good question. You know, every time we come out of, oh, going west down the Rockford Tollway, I don't know if that number is one ninety?
On the airport?
Yeah. Okay. And we're coming west, and we always see this, this is going to sound, we'll keep that. We see the signs that say Streamwood, five miles, Streamwood, two miles, and I just want some kind of assurance that Bartlett will get the same recognition that you're giving to Streamwood on the other toll. Not, not just Devon Avenue, next exit, Bartlett in or somewhere. Good, good village. Also, what's, can you, I, I know the right-of-way where the Oak Avenue extension is, has already been mapped out, and that won't affect any homes, right? Valid?
That's correct.
Okay. How, how close will this, in feet or yards, however you want to speculate, will that be to the houses that are along Ford Lane?
What's, what do you think?
Ford Lane between Oak Avenue and fifty-nine.
Can you read that subdivision anywhere? And if I had it on the ground, like, scaled, but are you even aware what the distance is, or what is?
Hundred feet?
Yeah.
And do you now have plans to put up the sound barrier walls?
We would have to analyze that, to see, because there's a couple of different ways that sound walls are built. There's a big fourteen principle change from existing conditions to proposed, or the noise is simply over a certain threshold. That's a whole deep analysis that would have to be done to, 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 to.
So what you're saying is if it does match your, qualify for your criteria, then sound barrier walls would be erected?
Yes. If the benefited residents, oh, yes. We actually go through a process, federal policy change in two thousand and eleven, and there are typically then a hundred feet of a wall, that's where you're going to have residents pretty much. So we sent letters to them with self-addressed envelopes, national, prior to two thousand and eleven, the village of Bartlett, we were sent. Yes, sir.
So now some, somebody can say no, and you won't build them?
If there's a majority of them.
Okay, so, okay, so you do it democratic?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I've got questions about the east side of town, then, because you're going to be getting awfully close to a subdivision on the east side of town, right where the proposed roadway will go under Devon and under the railroad tracks. It seems to me that it would make sense to, at that point, reduce the grade of the road, the level of the road, so that it's buffered by earth and not just a fence, because I live off Route fifty-nine, and the sound walls aren't necessarily the best, and they, they seem like they're a maintenance issue, and, I mean, I could still hear plenty of traffic. And I, and I'm concerned that that subdivision is going to get all that noise if the And I'm concerned that that subdivision is going to get all that noise if the roadway is at grade.
Can we go back to that? Let me. The idea would be, instead of going over Devon and over the railroad tracks, going under, so it starts to go down at this point here, and that would provide additional buffer that it's below grade.
Yeah, but I encourage you to dig as deep as you can to buffer the noise as much as we can for that subdivision. And in terms of this, the whole feasibility study, I mean, I think it's, I think everybody understands that this is, this isn't even the Phase One. This is pretty early on in the process. But are you soliciting input from residents at this point, or does that wait for the Phase One?
At any time.
At any time, okay. And how should the residents contact you?
They can contact us directly. I can provide my contact information.
Right.
And we can give the folks.
Right.
I think I got a question. Trustee Aaron's kind of covered the west end, and Ranky covered the east end. My question is where traffic gets on on North Avenue? I think that's extremely problematic. As far as when traffic backs up on 20 or North Avenue currently, we're going to cut up Oak Avenue and then cut up North Avenue to get on to the Elgin-O'Hare, 390. And about eight blocks from where that on-ramp is, there's a public school, kindergarten through six, a lot of the kids walk. So when you, I really would like to see some traffic counts of what currently the traffic is and what you propose, how much traffic is going to increase up North Avenue. That's actually a big sticking point for me, so.
I think we have a map, actually, at the end of this slide, showing the difference.
Your packet, that last slide, shows the different traffic counts, and I have it up here if you want to see it. Let's go and do that.
Well, how, that slide, does it show the traffic counts on north? I don't see that. It's just on Lake. Okay. And I think that that's what he's kind of getting at.
Yeah, the traffic is definitely going to increase on North Avenue.
Sure.
Because it's going to be extremely easy for people to get on, and we're going to have people coming up Route 59, cutting over on the west part of the road. It's just going to be an extremely easy access point to get on, and with a public school right there. And the public school's not, I mean, it's like right on North Avenue, and the sidewalks are extremely close to the, to North Avenue.
We'll provide that.
I think a better solution would be just take that on-ramp directly to 20, west of North Avenue, because then, and leave North Avenue, you can change that intersection, but make it where people can't go up North Avenue and get on.
Right, I mean, I guess I kind of see this two ways. One, North Avenue's not configured to handle any kind of volume of traffic. I mean, it already has a pretty significant volume, and you're right, the sidewalks aren't up to par, we've got a school there, it just wouldn't handle that. At the same time, I guess I could kind of see if we make it easier for people to get into the downtown area. Well, now, they're in the downtown area, we're always trying to figure out how to get people into downtown. So there's, I guess I would encourage, I like trustee Hopkins's idea, but any kind of traffic calming measures for North Avenue, I think that would be very important.
Back in 2001, you guys kind of did a feasibility study. Is that basically what you guys were figuring from the start of 390 or Elgin-O'Hare?
Well, there was a feasibility study in 91 that I'm aware of.
91.
91 and 2012. So it was kind of all of those things, plus the Hannover Park land use plan, got us thinking a lot.
How often do you guys meet? Is it a public meeting? Can the general public come to your meetings and find out what you guys are discussing?
Yeah, we could schedule one here. We just met at Village Hall, it's pretty informal, I think it's staff. I think the only elected official was the mayor of Hannover Park. So, yeah, we can find a forum to do that.
Yeah, I think once the residents actually, they read their Bartlett examiner, you know, in a week or two, and learn about this, I'm sure we're going to have a lot of residents that are going to have plenty of questions. So I think setting up a meeting and making them aware of that is a step in the right Has our traffic engineer been involved at all? Have they, has he seen anything here yet?
No. We have just been invited to attend the meetings. As Pete said, there's representatives from all the communities, mostly staff, and we've been, we've met at Hannover Park a couple of times, so.
Yeah. I definitely would like to get his insight on this, just to give us a little more knowledge, because we're not traffic experts by any stretch of the imagination, but just to get his input, that would be great.
Yeah, how can we, how can we use this to our advantage? I mean, I know Hannover Park has been very aggressive with IDOT, and I'd like to see us stepping up a bit and get some ideas on how we can maximize this for Bartlett's benefit.
Yeah.
Well, we should do that. I think to this date, honestly, we have been playing defense to see what kind of damage this is going to do, but you raise an important issue, which is to continue that, but see what things we can get out of having this. With your indulgence, I would like to ask two questions. Mr. Chairman, the first is really just a repeat of what you asked, because I didn't entirely understand it. One of our positions when we go over there is that neighborhood, and in trying to make sure that this road doesn't decimate their suburban peace. And your response to that was when we take the road under these two sections, that should help. And it's not really close to that subdivision, and so I don't entirely understand why taking the road under changes much for those folks. Maybe I'm not getting it.
I guess I'm making a relative comparison to the 1991 plan, which was a freeway way up in the air by those houses. So if there was a roadway there, if it was an arterial with less traffic and lower in the ground, in a relative sense, that would be better. The rest of it, I think, is something residents will comment on, and the village will comment on, so far as the desirability of that in general.
Thank you. Also, I was wondering, do you have any sense of a timeframe for moving through Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Two engineering and all of those things? When do you actually think this will begin?
Well, we'd need a consensus at the end of this feasibility study, so that's step one. And we'd like to wrap up the feasibility study in the first half of 2016. Typically, and just to estimate, maybe four years to do Phase One for this section, then it's typically another two years to prepare final design plans and acquire property if needed. So that's six years from starting Phase One is sort of the smallest timeframe. And that assumes, then, that there's funding in place to even start construction. Even Phase One would require funding.
Thank you.
Is there any way that the, I know the tollway's taking over 390 now, is there any way that they would fund this project instead of IDOT?
I think the tollway thinks very creatively, but I haven't seen a told arterial yet.
And I don't think we want one. I just have one question for you on this. I've got a lot of questions that'll be coming up, but on this map that you have on the east end, it almost looks like, and if you look at it from a topical view, it looks like two bypasses around a specific area. Question number one is, is the on-ramp, and this feasibility study, is the on-ramp on to 20, Lake Street, the first one that we have right now, going to remain? And number two, is there a reason why we, why we have to create this double bypass around a specific area?
The free-flow ramp that comes in, if you're coming from Bartlett to get on to the Elgin-O'Hare, that free-flow ramp that goes under would have to go away if we extended the mainline pavement. And then in terms of the improvements and alignments over by Devon Avenue, since we're going all the way under Devon, if we wanted to get access back to Devon Avenue, we'd have to build a connector road. It's right at the edge of that Hannover Park and Bartlett border, so that's just providing access to Devon Avenue.
Understood. Okay, so explain that again, I didn't quite catch that. The free-flow ramp onto Lake Street would be eliminated?
Correct. And so you'd have to go up on the bridge and turn left to get on to.
Gotcha, okay. But they can still get off there? They're not, just kind of flow all the way through into the east side of Bartlett? All this traffic is not going to have to come into our?
Correct, they could still exit. Motorists could exit as they do today.
I still am not sure about the question of why, I mean, and it might just be the way I'm looking at this, it almost looks like we're bypassing a specific area instead of turning that a little bit closer toward, what am I missing here that we don't want to attempt to remove? Is it just the historic downtown Ontarioville?
The existing stretch of Lake Street is pretty much maxed out. It's like 50,000 ADT in average daily traffic, and so the next solution you look at, if you're trying to unclog that, would be essentially an interchange, an overpass and ramps at Bartlett and Lake Street, so it's kind of maxed out. So this extension of the Elgin-O'Hare would take some traffic off of this section of Lake Street and distribute it a little bit more evenly throughout the area. So that's, that's part of it. And then the other part of it is, in terms of this being an arterial, trying to fit, be a better fit with Hannover Park's land use plan, but then also trying to take advantage, if there is to be a road, trying to push it away from the existing land uses that are there.
Well, I think I understand what Hannover Park's land use is, and he wants that big center area to be a new downtown area, from what I understand. And I don't know that, I think that we have a lot of discussions to be had amongst our board, because for most of them, this is the first they've seen this, and I think we need to really discuss what's best for Bartlett, to make sure we, as some people have already alluded to, make sure that we are, making sure we're in the best interest of Bartlett residents, and not just making sure that we can create a new environment
Any other questions or comments?
Will you do traffic counts for, like, cut-through traffics in certain areas, and is that part of, what stage in your planning here?
We actually have been modeling it, so we've got the network, and we can do traffic simulations, and so it tells us in a very general sense how the network is reacting to various changes. So that's where we can get those volumes for North Avenue, is through a model.
Okay.
Would you be able to show that model to us? Is that something you can show us through the internet?
It's software, what platform is it? So far as the model, what is the commercial name of the model itself? Is it Transcad? So it, does it have, like, a viewing platform? We can give you information, though, on what.
Okay, so it's not, it's not in a graphic way that would be easy for us to digest?
Correct, that's a different.
Spreadsheets, okay. Where's Vince when you need him? He's our spreadsheet guy, but, okay.
I think it would be important for you to take that information, give it to our staff, and get it to our traffic consultant.
Right.
And then I think our traffic consultant should digest it and maybe make a presentation to us about his thoughts and ideas.
And, you know, hitchhiking on what you're saying, is that we have to have some input from the public also.
Absolutely.
Certainly, yeah. Absolutely.
So I don't know where that would come in the, you know, in the transition here, or, you know, as we, you know, progress.
It'd be future meetings for that, to have that ability for the public to come and voice their concerns, right? Yeah. We would have some sort of meeting before we wrap up. Right. Okay.
Yeah, I think in the next month or so, you know, people are going to have questions, and we have a public hearing, and have them ask questions, and you can be here and answer their questions.
I know we have people out there this evening that have questions, but, you know, we'll have to hold those to a future meeting.
Right.
Well, I think it's important that any resident can use the website and send questions to staff, and they will get back to them and try to answer everyone's questions.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
You know, one of the things we might do is go ahead and put this PowerPoint on our website now, trustee Hopkins, and begin to, it's interest.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. President, that's all we have for planning and zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. That's it for this evening's committee, the whole meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Danny, I believe, seconded by trustee Aaron.
Sure.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Urban Earl? Sorry, Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.